Good evening, welcome to the Bennington Select Board Evening Meeting on May 28th. Or is it 45 degrees out there? We're having a nice evening of it. This is the meeting that we normally have on Mondays. We've had it because of the holiday. Thank you very much for adapting your schedules to this. And Happy Memorial Day. So before we start, I'd like to ask the members to introduce themselves. Why don't we start with you, Bill, please?
Bill Scully. Good evening, Chad Gordon.
Hello, Jeanne Jenkins.
My name is Jim Carroll.
Good evening, Carson Thurber.
And I'm Jean Conner.
And I'm Stuart Hurd, the Town Manager.
And I may not have introduced myself. I'm Donald Campbell, the Chairman of the Board.
And Nancy Liveley.
And Nancy Liveley, who almost got away from us tonight, but she always likes to try to sneak one in. Before we start, it has been our tradition to say the Pledge of Allegiance, and I have started from the left and been going to the right. Jim, would you be willing to lead us tonight, please?
My pledge of allegiance is due to the land of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every degree and justice for all.
Well, Jim, it's good to have you back.
Thank you.
I know you had quite a time up there in Montpelier.
Missed you terribly.
All your fun and games, you missed us terribly. We know you were watching us on TV. So, the first order of business tonight is to approve the consent agenda, which contains the minutes of May 13th and the warrants, which you all have had a chance to review and hopefully ask any questions of Stuart. May I have a motion? Well, let's see, are there any questions on either of these items before we?
I had one I already asked, but I'll just ask it out loud. Shea Family Funeral Home is for repairs to, in the cemetery?
Yes, yes. We have, when the stones in the cemetery are vandalized, we either hire Shea or Mahar to do the repairs depending on the bid price, because we, when we sell a gravesite, we're selling perpetual care.
Okay. Any other questions on the minutes?
On the minutes, on page six, line 216, I think it should be Morgan Spring, not Morgan Street. I thought that was kind of important.
Yes, that's right. That's the upcoming agenda item. Yeah, that should be the Morgan Spring Delivery Plan Update, Morgan.
Thank you.
Jeanne?
Okay, and then I found the typo. It's line 94, page three.
A minor spelling error of cognizant, okay. So with those, I'll set Nancy with those changes?
Yes.
All right, with those changes, all in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
I don't think anyone did a motion.
We didn't do a motion or anything on that.
They didn't do a motion.
Does it matter?
We didn't do a motion.
Motion to accept the minutes?
Thank you very much.
Second?
Thank you very much.
Abstain.
Jim's going to abstain. The rest of us voted to pass it. Thank you.
All right.
So, we're going to move into public comment here, which, as always, is a citizen's comment, is a time we reserve to hear residents' thoughts about topics not on the agenda. We welcome your insights, but because topics are unworn, this is not a time for board discussion or decision-making. So we'd ask you to state your name when you approach the mic and refrain from making personal attacks and keep your comments under three minutes, please. If you'd like a follow-up call, please leave your number on the sheet. I have phone numbers here, so thank you for that. The first person on our list tonight, Charlie, I can't quite read your last name.
Ross.
Good evening.
Yes.
Maybe say it one more time for the folks on Cat TV and tell us what's on your mind, please.
Oh, yeah, for the topic, I put down community improvement. Two quick little ideas. Number one, I use Silk Road a lot. The new covering on Silk Road is really lovely. However, it lost its center line, and long enough time has passed, I thought I'd bring that up, and maybe we could get a line painted down the middle of Silk Road on the new resurfacing. Number two, this has bugged me since I moved here. You come into Williamstown on Route 2, and you're going to get onto Route 7 to come to Bennington. And there's a sign right there at the intersection of 2 and 7, and it says, "Powell." There is no sign indicating that Bennington is down the road, and, what is it, nine miles? How close it is. And I'm at a lot of people down there, they don't realize that we're so close. That's it.
Thank you very much for those comments.
Somebody on Montpelier ought to take care of that.
Yeah, there's, we've been through a lot with the State Highway Department on road signage, but those are good comments, and we'll take them up with town staff, both of them. Thank you.
Donald, if I may?
Stuart, go ahead.
The center lines on all of the roads that were paved last year will be completed in the next fiscal year.
So?
So that's Silk Road, Dale Road, Austin Hill Road.
Likely this summer, you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. So, at least we got one of them there. We'll work on the other. Thanks. Rose, good evening.
Good evening. Nothing very long. I just was wondering, a lot of the seniors have been asking to, and we were promised that they were going to help us with, to teach us about computers and our phones. We were promised that we're going to get it, we haven't. And I guess the understanding is, if somebody wanted to come in, they have to be insured. Is that right?
If they're going to be an instructor, they need to have their own, they need to carry their own insurance, yes.
So has an instructor been named or identified?
I would have, I would have thought by now that that instruction would have begun.
Who's responsible?
Because we have computers in the facility, and it's just a matter of finding the appropriate individual to do the instruction.
And who has to do that outreach?
At this present time, it's Carrie Fabrechis, who's the Program Administrator at the Senior Center.
So I spoke to Carrie briefly about this, and it does sound like a priority, it does sound like something we should, we should find a way to make happen, and Carrie seemed to be working on some options. Is that not the case?
Well, she said her hands are tied, because if somebody comes in to teach us, most people haven't got money to pay insurance just to come to teach us how to run computers. I mean, we were promised, this was probably six months ago, maybe even longer. So how long does it take? Why can't, why can't the town do it?
Well, this would be hard to answer without Carrie here, but perhaps, would you be willing to talk to Carrie again about it and see what options can be worked out?
Certainly. I mean, if we're, I mean, we have funds to hire instructors to bring them in, so we should be looking for a consultant in computers with computer knowledge and phone knowledge to be able to instruct a class. We're not looking for anybody off the street who happens to be technically proficient. We're looking for someone who is in a sense of business to come in and do the work. I don't know why we haven't done.
We've got a couple of computer businesses here in town that I would think would be competent to do that.
We contract with a number of computer businesses in town that I would think would be competent.
Well, the first step is to approach the staff that's responsible for it and find out what she's done. So let us be in touch with Carrie and see what we can figure out there. It's a good point, Rose, and it should be a high priority for continuing education for everybody, so I think you have our support on this, but.
Yeah, but how are we going to do it? Once, you know?
Well, Stuart just said he's going to touch base with his staff, and he'll get back to Carrie on it, and Carrie will touch base with you. That's how the process unfolds.
We don't.
Have a little faith in it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rose. So the next item on our agenda is going to be a little bit ticklish. The, it's a solar item. This is the Community Solar Project. One of the great things about being Vice Chair is that every once in a while you get thrown into, thrown into the ring. I have to recuse myself from this topic because I'm both related to some of the people that are involved, and I also work for the Vermont Land Trust, which is also peripherally involved in this project. So I'm actually going to leave the table and sit down. Another member has a conflict. Bill, would you like to tell us about your situation?
Yeah, I'm actually working on a purchase with BEMA right now, so even though we've just agreed on pricing, I think it would be inappropriate for me to be making any comment, making any decisions.
So, why don't we just, why don't we just leave these folks to it and?
Anybody else want to step away from the table? You're like a dictator here in a minute.
No, we need all of us.
We need everybody else here for the quorum. And I am very sorry to step out on this. I feel very strongly about community solar, and I do feel like it's something we need to continue to work on, so I'm sorry not to be part of this, but good luck.
All right. I think it'll be fine. Hi. All right, so, next item up is the Shadowbrook Farm Community Solar Project at 1819 Monument Avenue. And I guess I wanted to start by saying the town plan strongly supports solar energy generation, and in particular, on page 21, which is after page 97, the numbering starts again for the energy. And then it starts again at 1:30 after the energy portion.
Three.
Just saying. Okay, if you're looking for it. It's the second, page 21. Number 47 under there, under this, says, "The town strongly supports the development of small-scale, 150-kilowatt capacity or less electricity generation from solar energy at homes, businesses, schools, and other institutions, as well as community solar projects. Community solar projects offer an opportunity for a range of people who might not otherwise have access to the benefits of solar energy generation to participate in a clean energy project. These individuals may include people who do not own property themselves, or those who own buildings with limitations caused by shading, or the size, orientation, or structural stability of a roof. Moreover, community solar projects offer efficiencies of scale that make individual investments more viable for people of moderate incomes." So, my understanding of the conversation today, and Dan, I'm sort of looking at you on this, is that our conversation is not whether this particular facility should be built, but instead whether there's adequate screening, and thus we would consider it as a preferred site. Is that accurate? Okay. So, so that's our charge, and we've been given, we were given materials in our packet, and I see that we've gotten some more materials since then. In our packet, we received a memo from the Planning Commission that states in part, "The Planning Commission passed a motion to approve the project with the proviso that the screening plan be improved by (a) making it less linear and uniform in character, and (b) making it more diverse in species to create a natural-looking screen appropriate to its surroundings." So that's one document we have, and it has lots of pictures, and I think some of those pictures may be similar to what BEMA has given us in a packet today, right? And then, second, we have a packet of materials from Power Guru from BEMA Neta, which goes through the history of the project since January, and, and I guess that's, and also includes some additional maps and information back and forth. So I'm thinking that probably we want to start with having BEMA talk to us, talk us through the project. Does that make sense? Okay.
Thank you, folks. My name is BEMA Neta, the owner of Power Guru. Someone's phone is ringing. So, yeah, quick bit of info and history about the project. This is a proposed 150-kilowatt community solar array, not a 500 nor a megawatt scale. This is an important distinction to make. The scale of this project is almost 20 times smaller than your megawatt-scale projects, or about four times smaller than a 500-kilowatt project. It's composed of two arrays, which are located towards the back of a field, and together they would take up about half an acre out of 237 acres of that field. The field is, has hedge rows on three sides. So it would sit about 1,500 feet west of Monument Avenue, far enough away that it's not visible to the public. And the energy from the array goes towards community nonprofits, Bennington Project Independence, Bennington Coalition of the Homeless, and other local area homes and businesses. So the nearest neighbors are the Coefields to the east. They're about 800 feet from the project site and can get a view of the side of the array. And the Hogan site, which is a long, narrow site to the south, there's a house on the Hogan site, which is about 1,000 feet east of the project site, near Monument Avenue. And they wouldn't be able to see the arrays. They are hidden by a hedge row the entire distance from Monument Avenue all the way up to, past the project site itself. So immediately to the south of the project site, on the Hogan property, there's no house there at the moment. But we're informed that Mr. Hogan may build a house there sometime in the future. This is conservation land, and the Vermont Land Trust has sent us their approval of the solar site, since it's considered a temporary installation. Basically, there are, it's going to be, the posts are going to be mounted with augers, so there's not going to be any concrete or anything, so it's not considered a permanent fixture. So, some history, I presented this to the Planning Commission and Select Board in January. We received the go-ahead at that time. After that, following the Act 248 Rule 5010 process, we met with the neighbors, the Coefields and the Hogans. We hired a landscape architect who developed photographic simulations showing how the site can be hidden from their view. So, and you can see that, you can see, you can take a look at the packet I just gave you. So the first shows the VLT map, and the middle arrow is the proposed location. The arrow on the right is close to where the Coefield residence is, and south of that would be the Hogan property.
Can I just add the x's on, so are you on this?
I'm sorry, I was referring to the x's, not the arrows. Right.
What are the x's?
The x's were three potential locations of the solar sites. We eventually settled on the middle one. The one to the far right would be too close to the Hogan property, the one to the left would be too far away from Monument Avenue to be financially viable.
No?
Correct, the middle one is the one that's the proposed site. Is the, is the proposed location. And towards the back of that would be the two arrays. So if you, and as you go through, you see there's around one set, we'd like to quickly go through that. So the first one shows the east, the view of the two arrays from the east. The arrow is pointing from the Coefield property towards the two solar arrays. And so this is, in this set of simulations, the landscape architects we had, TJ Boyle, showed the installation of a bunch of white spruce on the rise, on a bit of a berm, on the east of the two, the east of the two arrays, on the edge of that field. Are you able to see that?
Oh. Can, yeah, so is this?
We're in, we're in the packet that you gave us today.
Wouldn't that be the second or the third page?
Yes. Okay. Not the one that came in our packet last week, but we're, we should be in the packet that you gave us.
Right, yes. Yep, the third page, I would think, yes.
And BEMA, is this, on that third page, is this the March or the May?
This would be the first round. This would be, when we, yeah, this one, this was the first set that we made originally following meeting the neighbors as part of our due diligence process. So met with the neighbors, we designed these simulations, or rather, the architect designed these, carried out the simulations. So the first one shows the overview, the plan view, of the tree plantings to the right of the arrays. So in the next page is a view from the east, from the Coefield site, without any plantings. And you can see the side view of the two arrays in the distant field. And the next page after, after that is the view from the east with the plantings. These are the white spruce, and they're shown at an age of about five years old.
Wait a minute. All of these, these, these things that you've sent us, all right, we're going beyond that. You know, it's really frustrating, and I've got to say, it's got to be frustrating for the people that are watching, is they can't see this. And I think it might be helpful if you were to present these to the camera.
To, sorry, say that again, to, to the camera, yes.
Present the, present the images to the camera, because these are the things that are going to determine whether or not, what we do with this. And it would have been helpful if you had maybe a PowerPoint.
So, well, at this point, we don't, so let's keep going. Would you like to go, what's, what's the group's preference? Would you like BEMA to go through this, and then we ask questions?
Yes.
Okay, so let's let you continue, and then we'll ask questions.
I actually do have a PowerPoint, if you have any slide pictures that you want to see up there, or I can give that to Cat TV when we are done. So that's the view from the east with the plantings. Again, this is the first round of simulations. And the next page shows the view from the south. These are simulations, there's a two, two types of plantings that we did over here, that are shown over here. One is with dogwoods, and the other is with arborvitae. So this is the view to the south, in, a view from the Hogan property, at a point which is about 50 feet or so, south of the hedge row, separating the two properties. And it's our understanding that Mr. Hogan is considering building a house a few hundred feet further to the south. But this location that you're looking at is about 50 feet to the south. I just wanted to point out for clarification. So the next page shows what it would look like without any plantings. And the page after that shows what it would look like if you planted arborvitae. Again, these are about 10 feet tall, arborvitae, between seven and 10 feet tall, and when we first planted them, they'd be about five feet tall, so there's a few years after you planted them. The next picture shows the simulations with dogwoods in the summer, and the one after that is a simulation of the dogwoods in the winter. So we presented these simulations, and the, at the request of the neighbors, we met with the Planning Commission again in May, early in May, and showed them the simulations that we did. And I think, as you pointed out, Vice Chair, the Planning Commission again approved the site with the proviso that the screening plan be improved by making it less linear and uniform, and by planting a diversity of species. So we did some more photographic simulations. So this is the second set. So this time, the eastern view shows a mix of plantings. These are maples, dogwoods, spruce, and nannyberry. So again, the views from the east with the naturalized plants in the summer and in the winter show that the arrays can be completely hidden. Actually, the site on this side is pretty easy to screen. We can even raise the berm a little, a little bit by a few feet with some compost and seed. Again, they're only going to be able to see the side view. If you look at the side of the arrays, it's about inch and a half inside, and the posts themselves are about inch and a half in diameter, so that's, that's the view that they'd be seeing from 800 feet away. Now, if you look at the view from the south, the plan view shows, again, a whole mix of plantings going deeper into the, into that four-and-a-half-acre field. And again, this mix includes maples, dogwoods, white pines, arborvitae, and nannyberries. So the next picture shows what the plants would look like in the summer, and the one after that is what they'd look like in the winter. But wait, there's more. So what we did was, after we did all of this, we took a look at our design, at our proposed solar array design. This is the last page, and you'll see that there is a profile picture of the solar array. There's two profile pictures. The first one is with the array at an angle of 30 degrees, about two-and-a-half feet above grade. The array would be almost 11 feet in height, and the two arrays would take up about 54 feet in depth. What we did was, we decided that we could do, we could change the design a little bit, and by doing so, we can make a pretty dramatic difference in the profile and visibility of the array. We dropped it from 30 degrees to 20 degrees, and we dropped the array a little bit, down to about two feet above grade. When you do that, the total height of the array is now under eight feet, and the total array shrinks to about 48 feet. So that makes it easier to screen on both the east and the south sides. So that's, that's what we had done. That's, that's about $5,000 in simulations, about $20,000 worth of landscaping work to do all of this, for a side view of a solar array from 800 feet.
Okay.
And for a house that doesn't currently exist.
So what is the board's pleasure? Do we want to talk with BEMA now? Do we want to hear from the, from any community members that are here first? What's your pleasure?
I've, I've got some.
He's up here? Okay, I guess we have questions for you then. Yes, Jim?
I'm sorry that these weren't numbered, but the view from the south, the simulation arborvitae, are those an evergreen plant?
The arborvitae is an evergreen, yes.
So in contrast to that, the simulation with the dogwoods, the dogwoods would shed their, their greenery.
Correct.
During the winter months, so you'd have this.
Yes.
You'd have that exposed, so I think, you know, aesthetically, you know, what we're trying to do is hide it. So therefore, arborvitae would be the way to go.
Right, so the second set of simulations included arborvitae, white pine, and a couple of deciduous plantings as well. The intent there was to meet this notion of having a diversity of species which are more natural and blend in with the surroundings. Of course, we can plant arborvitae and white pines, which would give a year-round.
Screening.
Yeah, screen. And they would still be natural. I think we can stagger the plantings and make sure that, you know, they, they cover the gaps in the, in the hedge row.
And that was also at the, that was also a suggestion of the Planning Commission?
Yes.
To diversify the plantings?
Yep.
Others?
So, no, I'm not done.
So the second set diversifies the plantings.
So why would you, you know, if the intention is to screen it year-round, why would you go with dogwoods that are going to shed their leaves?
This was an initial, the first round of simulations where we had the dogwoods. In the second round, we did the, you know, the full, a more, a bigger variety of species, and so we could, in the, you know, in, in reality, what we can do is just do white pines and arborvitae.
You may have said, I may have missed it, are the simulations using the lower height of the panels or?
No, the simulations are with the.
Higher.
Original height.
Okay.
And the, in reality, it would sit even lower than.
Okay.
What you're seeing over there.
I know there was concern, and these simulations, are they, if you were standing on the ground, looking, you know, what about if you were on the first floor of the home, depending on the grade of the property, or the, the second story, third story, if there happens to be a third story?
Yeah, I think it's possible that you can catch a glimpse of the top edge of the array if you are about 25 feet up in the air. And can, you can get a really good view with a pair of binoculars.
I seem to have noticed, on especially the solar array that's on Route 7 South, kind of across the street from the Sheriff's Building, there's arborvitae, I believe, planted there, and the deer love them.
Right.
That screening is a disaster. So I am encouraging you and your, and the neighbors to possibly build in some sort of language that if the screening is not. that if the screening is not proving to be as beautiful as these pictures, that you can revisit this and you will improve upon it. Because I personally am disgusted every time I ride by that solar array on Seven South because it does not look anything like it was supposed to look. And we're years out now. So I guess I question arborvitae. I love arborvitae, but I don't have deer in my yard. So I'm curious why arborvitae is a choice of not only you, but several other people who work on screening projects when the deer love them.
Well, I can tell you why. They perform a beautiful job screening. You know, they grow thick and wide. And if you can protect them from the deer with any, you know, mesh or anything like that, or if you can do a fence, then you could be able to, you know, do a better job with them. But you're right, the deer do love them.
Okay.
So we do have, you know, we have other options. We could do more white pine, we could do spruce.
Wouldn't it be less expensive? If the deer really like this stuff, they're going to eat it up. It's going to be useless. So isn't there a better planning? And thank you, Jean, for bringing that up. I'd never even considered that. It's going to be cheaper for you and you're going to get lasting and better results.
With white pine and spruce, yeah.
Whatever the deer aren't going to eat.
If it's a year-round thing, I mean, you see, here's the thing. We're trying to meet the screening ordinance. And the screening ordinance has a bunch of, you know, requirements. One is it has to be a year-round screen. It has to be natural. It has to blend in with the environment. And it has to not look like some, you know, a straight line, you know, installation of trees. So we're trying to meet that with what plantings you can do at our disposal. So, yeah, you can do it with white pines. You can do a bunch of other things like dogwoods and so forth, but they don't provide a year-round screen. If you do just white pines alone, that's not a diversity of species.
It's not a what?
Diversity of species. As a requirement of the screening guidelines. You know, it's not a diversity, right? It's just a monoculture.
Okay, well, these two choices that you, you know, the boxwood and the arborvitae
Yep.
are going to be, they're prey species to the deer, so.
The dogwood?
No, no, the prey, the arborvitae.
Arborvitae would be, but the dogwood and the white pines are not.
The dogwood is going to shed its leaves.
Right.
And then, you know, you're defeating the purpose of trying to screen.
So if you had to think about the options you have at our disposal, right? You have five or six natural species that you can plant over there, right? So white pines can do the job. They can, you know, provide year-round coverage, but they're a monoculture. They are one species. If you, you know, the screening guideline says you want a diversity, we're looking to plant more. But if you folks say that you're okay with just planting white pines, we'd be okay with that too. We have no problem with that.
Well, I want to remember, I mean, the planning commission did look at this and their recommendation the second time was to make it more diverse so that you don't have just one species there. So to make it less linear and to make it more diverse in species. And I think it is both because it lives in, looks more natural, and you don't just have one species as something comes in and beats the whole thing.
Yeah, I totally agree with that.
Yes.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Okay, so other questions? Chad, do you have any?
I don't have any questions. I liked the last page, the suggestion of changing the angle. I think that's a great idea.
Thank you.
It affects the profile. That was a smart move. It affects the footprint, which is good. And then the second proposal, I just appreciate your ability to adapt to the changes and come through with the diverse species. And I'm liking the looks better of the second set of plans.
Thank you.
I know we're going to hear from the neighbors here momentarily, but this round in front of us, we're hearing that you have been to the neighbors to talk to them?
On the second round?
Yeah.
No, I have sent them the simulations. I have not had a chance to talk to them.
Because last time this came in front of us, the communication was, I won't say you specifically, but we were told through the conversation that this plan had gone to the neighbors, kind of, maybe we should have asked more specifically by name what neighbors you spoke with. But at that point, we were kind of going with the flow of, the neighbors had been informed. We didn't think we'd probably be having this conversation tonight. So can I just kind of get some confirmation that you've spoken to the neighbors about this? They've been a little bit involved?
About the second round?
Yeah.
I will say that I have not spoken to them. I have sent them the simulations. That's it.
So we'll get a little feedback from the neighbors tonight. Obviously, it would be great if the neighbors were fully on board. We might not get to that point, we'll see. But thank you for that. I'm sure it wasn't cheap to do these simulations. So we appreciate you taking the time to do that. They're very thorough, especially the Hogan lot to the south is clearly the one that's, you know, per these simulations, is going to be the most impacted. I take it maybe, hopefully, they're here? Great, yep, there they are. So that feedback will be interesting to hear their opinions on this as well. Not that that necessarily completely impacts decisions, but it'd just be good to have that dialogue, so.
Any other questions for Bima while we have him up here? No? All right.
Before I leave, can I make one additional comment?
Yes.
So what you're looking at is two properties, both with houses on them. One property is wanting to do a community solar on it. And the other property has a house on it. And the folks over there say that, oh, we want to build a house near where your community solar is, and ah, now we cannot do it. Okay? So think of the precedent this is going to set for community solar. Anyone can claim to install anything that would be directly in front of a community solar. The idea that you can hide the community solar so that nobody can see it, ever, is not tenable.
Bima, I hear you loud and clear, but it is important for us to hear from the neighbors.
Okay, I just wanted to make that comment on record.
No, I completely agree. That's why I asked, have you already had the conversation in advance with these folks? It's one of those things where we're all not ever going to agree perfectly on everything, but it is important for them to be allowed to kind of, you know, they're the neighbors, they own the land. If it is a building lot, which I can probably guess that it is a building lot, it's important for them to have their moment. I mean, we've been down this road with solar before and everyone, no matter what opinion they have, they get a chance at the mic.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. All right, so when we open it to anyone, either people that are on, I mean, Susan, you're also welcome to speak. So anyone on the property or neighbors that would like to speak to this, please step to the mic.
Hi, my name is Tim Hogan, 2323 Mount Mibben Avenue. We are a big property directly south, as you were referring to. I gave you all a packet to kind of look through. Primarily, this packet is a bunch of photos of the site. But I just wanted to say before we get started, we do not oppose their project, the community solar project in any way. We just oppose the sighting of the project. We have asked them to move the project, I would say, a hundred and fifty feet over a row of hedges that is on Bima's site. You would actually can see that. And we would be perfectly fine with that. It's screened and I included what the screening is from that site to the site that they currently have in the packet that I gave you.
Is that the third X? That's that other X up here?
No, it's not, actually. It's actually, if you were to look at Bima's proposal, if you go directly north of that X, see the hedge row directly behind?
Yeah.
That, if you would actually, if you want to take a look at the packet that I gave you, we can go there first if you want, but or you can look at my packet in the order that I want to look at it.
Just to orient, to switch, okay.
Yeah.
You're looking at your packet?
Yeah, this is my packet, yeah. So why don't we, can we just walk through my packet as we get there?
So it has, it has your opinion on it?
Your opinion. This was a letter to the editor that was written by Susan and David four years ago. It was dated September 1st, 2015. And actually, we are in complete agreement with this. Their premise here was that there is a solar, a cellar tower put in on a college property that they found offensive. They wrote a letter to the editor saying, like, so we've been following the controversy of solar with interest because we've been dealing with a proposed cell tower in Southern Vermont College to a hundred and twenty feet from our property. Like solar arrays, cell towers have a significant aesthetic impact on the surroundings. That's the key. They agree with us that this is going to have a significant aesthetic impact on our property and their property and the surrounding areas. So therefore, I took pictures of our property looking into their arrays, which is this, right here, do you all have this? So they've been telling you this is screened from our side to theirs. As you can see, most of the trees that are along that property line are dead. This is our property looking into theirs.
And that, this isn't just because it's winter?
What?
This isn't just because it's winter?
Most of these trees are, a lot of these trees are dead and they're covered with vines. So they're actually going to fall down. I counted them the other day. Nine or ten of the tall trees will either fall down or need to be cut down probably over the next three to four years.
And can you just verify, this is taken from where?
From my property.
Is this from your house?
No, it's from the field where we're considering building a house.
So this is from your, the proposed house?
Yeah, exactly. This is the field directly south of their property. If you look through, I'm sure you folks are familiar with this. There's a, the town of Bannington has a scenic resource inventory. Are you guys familiar with that document? If you were to look in this document, and this anchors back to the town plan, these views are prominently displayed, not necessarily these views, but views of their light are prominently displayed in this, in this document and are asked to be preserved. And all we're asking is that our views are preserved. If you screen this, we're going to lose. If they put the screening that they're proposing up in front to try to hide this, it's going to segregate the views that we have that the community has said are really important that we try to preserve. So that's that. As for screening, is it true, Bima, that you can plant whatever you want in that field to screen this property? Can you plant, can you, we had a conversation and I said to you, like, after the planning commission meeting, I reached out to you and I said, "Bima, I think it would be great, maybe this could work if we did a berm with some plantings on it over near the array with some trees over near the array" so that the array was going to be screened right at the site. The berm is full year-round screening, you're not going to see through the dirt. Then you can make it look natural through other plantings around on the berm. But can I?
Let's do a few numbers. We're talking about a three-hundred-and-fifty-foot-long solar array. If you build a berm three-hundred-and-fifty feet long, it's about twenty feet of the base, about ten feet tall, that's about twenty-five-hundred yards of stuff. It's topsoil, mud, topsoil, compost. That's an incredible amount of money. It's very expensive. And I'm not certain at this point whether the VLT will buy off on that as well.
Since you're at the mic, can I ask one quick question?
Sure.
So what's, there's got to be some, a very good reason to this. The hundred-and-fifty feet moving it north? Where's the conflict come from that one? Bouncing it to that next hedge row over? Is it the same owner of that land? Is it further from the power source? What's the reason?
This is something that David, David, perhaps you could comment on.
I'm not trying to ask a difficult question. I just didn't know the answer.
Are we really looking at, are we really looking at screening not really? I do want to remind us that the question before us is not whether this is a site, whether we approve the site, it's whether we approve the screening. But I mean, if you're comfortable answering the question, please do, but.
I'm happy to answer that. It's not under consideration because we have two-hundred-and-thirty acres conserved. Of that, there are seventeen acres set aside in perpetuity. Of those seventeen acres, maybe ten are actually developable. Because this property is under the Vermont Land Trust forever, that's the only acreage out of two-hundred-and-thirty where all future generations might be allowed to build a home or do whatever isn't allowed in our conservation easement. It's a nest egg for future generations and I think it would be unwise of us to use it with a solar array. It's also a logging staging area for our current use. And it's just not something that we're willing to consider because of having to think generations ahead. That's part of the challenge of having a property like this. Very few places we could cite this array. And we've gone through a lot of discussions with the Vermont Land Trust to arrive at this point. So I'm, that's the explanation. But I really didn't think that's what we are here to talk about tonight.
And you're correct about that. We're not. So I think it is, the screening is the only issue before us.
So ignore all else, just go with the screening?
Go with the screening, okay.
Yep.
No, I wasn't, I was saying that for myself more than anything.
Yeah, that's fair, that's fair. The only way to effectively screen is to do this. The reason they don't want to screen close to the array is because I don't believe they have the authority to do so with the easement permission from Vermont Land Trust. I talked to Vermont Land Trust. They told me that Bima does not have, he has to get any screening approved through Vermont Land Trust before it can officially be done. Is that officially, is that true?
It hasn't approved of screening.
So they have to do approval of screening. So they've gone out of their way to stay out of the middle of the field because the only things that Vermont Land Trust told me they could plant there were agricultural-related products, i.e. apple trees or trees of the region. That's why their screening is very linear and all specifically on the south side along the fence line. Because what is it, prime agricultural soil that they cannot use or plant in?
Well, and in fact, I think in one of the documents that we received, the Vermont Land Trust said they preferred less screening rather than more screening because it didn't impact agricultural land. So, I mean, so we are already asking for more, or the planning commission is asking for more screening to address this issue and basically going against the wishes of the land trust.
And I think the obvious is pretty clear here. I mean, he's got a lot that's going to be staring, no matter how much we add it, at a solar panel and it's going to decrease the value. So we're going to be at odds no matter how we go about this.
Honestly, I, the planning commission, the planning commission is truly only an advisory board to you. You truly have the ability or the authority to override any decisions they make. You could look at this resource inventory. You could look at the statement that was put in regarding land use and development regulations that clearly states here that I would love an explanation of to say why it's even acceptable given the fact that it is in the rural conservation area and it's going to clearly segregate our views of things that are in this resource inventory.
So my understanding from the town plan is that because this is community solar, it's not over a hundred-and-fifty kilowatt facility. Our only question is screening. That power guru can choose, if we didn't approve the screening, you could still, power guru could still choose to put community solar there. So really, what we are trying to do, I believe, is to make sure that there's adequate screening and that we do the best job we can in terms of protecting people's views. Does that seem accurate, Dave?
Just a clarification.
Okay.
Mr. Hogan refers to land use and development regulations. Those are not relevant for solar projects because they are exclusively under the control of the Public Utilities Commission and they only look at the town plan. They do not look at land use and development regulations. And our town plan clearly states that community solar isn't allowed use. Where we come up against Where we come up against an issue is whether or not, the screening is the main issue, whether or not we want to call this a preferred site and is therefore eligible for additional funding or additional, I guess they call it solar adder, for additional money for the developer. But the town plan is clear on the fact that community solar projects are allowed. It's just a matter of how far does the select board want to go in, in supporting this particular project?
Thank you.
Is that it for me?
Yes, in terms of deeming it a preferred site, there's, there's two things. One is there is a solar credit associated with that. That does not count to us. It goes towards the owners of the community solar, making it more viable for them to do solar. If you remove that solar credit, the, the solar will become about five to 10% less viable financially.
So you're saying the price would go up for those that are buying into the, the community solar?
Right.
I'm sensing I'm only supposed to ask screening questions, so I'm going to phrase my question in a screening sense. How much more screening is offered if you move the development or the array closer to the not-to-be-disturbed little lines you have here on your, on your page, which I'm hearing are future developable, air, developable, not a word, area? Are you in the middle of that field or are you getting closer to the north? How, where does that actually land in real life? In the middle of the field or is it over towards the hedgerow? So it's close to the hedgerow?
It's at the very edge of the hedgerow, way to, towards the north, yep.
So that's the best-case scenario for you?
Yeah.
I mean, sitting down here. That's as close as the hedgerow is you're going to get.
Right, yeah, they're far over, but still the progress has, has, has slowed.
I, I, I know exactly where it is. I mean, I couldn't, I understand.
You would be looking straight down. And again, if they were to move it-
That doesn't sound like it's happening.
So the only really effective way for us not to see it is to do screening closer to the array. Obviously geometry would give you, the farther away you are, the lower the trees, the higher the trees have to be. If you move the screening closer to the array over in the field instead of over on the fence line, then you're going to get a better bang for your buck per se because we're going, we're not going to, earlier on, you're going to, it's going to be screened more. Obviously evergreen trees planted closer to the array would, would be, be ideal. The only real true way to do a year-round screening that's going to be effective is a berm, though. I mean, and, you know, that's, I don't know what to say.
So isn't, I mean, so there, there's correspondence in here somewhere about a berm, yes? And so there is not, setting aside the, the issue of it being extremely expensive, there's also a question of whether it's allowable, yes? There is that, and then the other thing on the screening is as you get closer to the array, then you have to worry about shadow. And if we move in the other direction, then we're in agricultural soils again. So what is the play beside, so setting aside a berm, what is the play in terms of where else, I mean, this, where else can the screening be if it can't be closer to the array or further in the field?
The hedgerow, that's the only constraint we had proposed.
There's no good outcome for you on this one?
No, zero. There's, really, we're, we're the loser, yeah, for sure.
Can I make a suggestion that we do a site visit? Because this is all abstract.
Already done one. I mean, hopefully everyone's been out there, I mean, I've walked exactly where he's talking about. There's no good, I mean, I don't need to say the obvious here, I, there's a reason you're sitting here. You're, if you put a house there, if you don't like the view the way it is, you're going, you're going to end up with what could be deemed a, a less-than financially, you know, optimal view with if you're looking at a solar array. I just, the question is, are you actually going to put a house there? That's, we don't know.
Well, we don't.
Or if you're going to sell the lot, it's not up to us, but we, I understand your concern loud and clear.
We have talked about it and it-
It doesn't make a difference, you don't need to say yes or no.
We have considered it and it's been in our plans. Obviously we're 55 years old, I mean, and, you know, we have a long ways to go to retirement here. But our, our position is no different than their position. They're telling you that they can't move it 150 feet. Again, I know I can't say that, but they can't move it because it's their legacy and their, their future generations. Well, what about ours? You know, I mean-
I get it.
I know, because the only thing we're considering here is screening. Yeah.
I mean, this is, I-
Do we have other neighbors we want to hear from?
Jeff Noyes, I live on 2100 Monument Avenue. Just wanted to make everyone aware, my, my first knowledge of this project was received on a letter from Power Guru on May 14th, 2019. A lot of great information. I do appreciate this drive to sustainability. I come from a corporate culture, this, it's one of our underpinnings, core competencies, so I get it, and there's a lot of great work that has gone into this. But I do see, I, I do see a disconnect and, and I, I want to say this and if I'm inappropriate, please stop me. I was, I received in a certified letter here, the Shadowbrook Farm Community Solar Project, it was from consulting engineers Crebes and Lansing, and none of this information is actually within this project here in which I realize we're talking about screening. Right? And, and I do get that, but we sit here, I have an announcement, but nothing in my announcement gave me any of this information that I'm seeing today. And I am a little bit taken back and, and hopefully so, that this information here, because this project isn't, in, in my opinion, that of Jeff Noyes at 2100 Monument Avenue, isn't that it's just this solar arrays, series of solar arrays. It's the solar array in the ensuing infrastructure that supports the solar array that then fits into the power grid. And so I do ask into my vantage point, once again, where we have, I, I sit at the apex of the access point to this power array, what is, what is that impact? If there is a, any sort of transfer station, does the same screening criteria apply to that as well? Because that would be immediately into my front yard. And I do want to say, and I know, Ms. Connor, you, you mentioned this, I can see this parcel of land from my second-story window from my vantage point. So it is, it is interesting to me, but I mean, that's, that's, that's really where I'm coming from. I, I then, it, it, from finding out the 14th to this, I do ask questions as, are we changing any zoning associated with this project, especially to the land in front of me? Does it move from agricultural to a different use? I would, I would like to know that. I have not been given that information whatsoever, and I do find it interesting that I received a letter on May 14th, but from Power Guru and, and probably an oversight, I'm, I'm sure, but by no means was there any information informing me of this forum this evening in that letter. All correspondence was directed back to Bima@powergumo.com and the, and the associated phone number as well. So I, I do think, you know, once again, I, I see here a power array with screening, I see a substantial upgrade to the road infrastructure, a 12-feet-long gravel road that needs to be installed. I see a power conduit basically moving from the array through, through the property, back into basically, into a position right in front of my home. So once again, I, I do ask the question, I think there's a grander, bigger scope here to the project and the associate of screening, right, than, than exists.
Do you, would you like to respond to that? Those are great questions, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I can, I'm done, so.
There is no grander, bigger scope. This is it. The conduit comes across the field and goes into the, into the, the pole over there, there would be three, there won't actually even be a transformer, the transformer would be actually out at the project site and would just go straight up into the pole. There'd be one conduit going up to the pole, that's it.
So is the, the, the improvements would be the road, is that, the, in, in terms of neighbors seeing improvements besides, besides the array?
There is an extension of about 10 to 12 feet of the road, the driveway, the, the road that's coming in into the project site, just so that the trucks can go over there into the project site without ruining the earth over there. That's it. There's already a, a big truck sitting over there, right next to the project site, which you can see in the pictures. And our, our position is that if that existing truck doesn't do any damage, and the pickup trucks that we use and the vans that we use to get to the project site will not either.
So I guess I, 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 I didn't, I'm not necessarily aligned with, with the explanation because I do see from, from the scale of these drawings here, once again, more than willing to share that, a significant, a significant developed road, once again, and the road specs are here, which is a proposed 12-foot-wide gravel access road for GMP. So that means Green Mountain Power has access to this land, which now puts a significant increase to commercial traffic at an access point right in front of my house as well. So I, I, I ask once again, are we, I mean, GMP is a, is a, I do believe, and don't correct me if I'm wrong, I believe they're more commercially aligned here. So if there is a fortification of the road in front of my house, I understand that, but there's also a fortification further on, which is, and correct me if I'm wrong, to your scale here is much grander than 10 to 12 feet long. So I, once again, I'm just seeking to understand, not, not in opposition, I think there's been a, a great share of ideas of perhaps improvement to the project, but when I receive information for the first time on May 14th, these are the type of questions, and not once have I been, you know, given the opportunity to have a conversation directly with Power Guru here. So I think, I, I think that's a real miss.
Yep.
So I, I think I've said enough tonight. I know that I have other members within my community who are impacted and would like to speak as well. So thank you for the time.
Thank you. I, I will, I do want to say that I am part of a community solar project, not with Power Guru, with Solar Pro. And GM, I, Green Mountain Power needs to have access to the site because it's a community solar site. But I'm wondering if you could speak to what you, what you anticipate as increased traffic?
There will be some traffic during construction and that's it. There is not going to be any ongoing traffic, there won't be any requirement for maintenance of this site other than, you know, brushhoggging as needed. And this is, again, folks, I mean, this is a matter of scale. We're talking about a 150-kilowatt community solar array. This is about the smallest community solar that you can do. This is single-phase, it's not industrial scale. The transformer would be about three feet high, about four feet wide, about four feet deep.
Okay.
So, I mean, you know, there isn't a major, you know, I think I, I hear this gentleman saying there'll be these grand designs to industrialize this, this area. This is, there's no such design in, in the works. When you look at the extension of that, of that little road that's getting you into, turning into the, the solar site, even that was drawn by the, our site designer for the purpose, because he didn't, he hasn't been to the site, he thought maybe it would be required. In reality, when you go out there, we may not even need to do that.
All right, thank you. I do think that this points up the usefulness of having conversation ahead of time.
Preferably the first one.
Can I make one final point?
I bet you'll be back up here.
So, yeah, so we are going through a process here, pardon me, and at each step of the process, we informed all the neighbors as required, what is, you know, what we are, what we are doing, what is being planned and so forth. There is nothing missed in what we did. We sent the 45-day notice to all the neighbors and we gave them our contact information for, for them to reach out to us if they needed to.
Okay, thank you. Next.
Hi, I'm Pam Caulfield. We are a house that's really there, right now. And we are the house that will look at the array and we are, we too are not opposed and we appreciate the fact that you've dropped it down lower and made it, you know. But when you say we only see it from the side, that's not quite true either. If you're standing right there, you'll see it from the side, but were you in the field the other day putting in the posts?
On the same post, yeah.
Yes, I could see their truck the entire time we're sitting there. So that's where the posts were. So I know we'll be able to see it. And, you know, as far as putting a five-foot tree, does that mean that it's the base and then you put it in, you buy it at five foot and it really is only a three-foot tree? Because if these are eight feet high, we'll definitely be able to see it. And I'm not opposing the project at all, but I do feel that the information that's come out at times has not been accurate. Like when I got the phone call that said I'd only ever see it from my second floor when it was winter, is not true necessarily. And also if you look at the scale on the thing, that's a four-acre parcel. If you look at it, you're saying you're only using half acre, but on the, on this thing, it looks like it's almost half of that field. Well, I mean, if you look at, at this, it truly is, almost half, half would be right here.
It's 350 feet long, but 50 feet wide.
Right.
So if you do the numbers, it's about half an acre.
But it comes out almost to the middle of that field, though. See that?
There will be about, this will be about 10 feet on the end.
Right.
It's about 25 feet.
Right, but when you put the post in, if you go out, it is, it, it's-
Do you average them?
I think it's more than a half acre. But anyway, that's beside the point. But I wish the, that there had been honesty at the first, that we are going to see it. And I feel, I was told, I think, by the planning commission, Dan, is this right, that, that even if you didn't approve, that the utilities could just say it's fine anyway? That the, that a planning commission meeting and this meeting are really irrelevant except for maybe possibly the screening?
This is not irrelevant, this, this board, neither the planning commission or this board have permitting authority to hold utilities' decisions.
But even if you opposed it, the utilities could still say it's fine. So I, I, yeah, so I, I just sort of feel like I'm a stone in a river that's being pushed down, not being given all, all of the information up front and being told that we are going to see it. And, you know, I think the, the mitigation is probably a moot point because we'll see the sun shining on it, it'll, it'll reflect. And when you say there won't be anybody, what are you going to do all winter when there's snow on it? Does, it doesn't have, it doesn't, so it's, once the snow comes, then it rains and ices, then there's no electricity at all from it?
So you know they're going to-
So they don't clean it off or, you don't come out and plow it or?
No, actually not. For a life, not, it's on itself.
Oh, okay. I just, I didn't know. I also would like to ask the land trust, what happens when you do put a, a, a commercial thing on agricultural land? Does that change, does that change the zoning?
Donald, do you want to answer? Okay, all right.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay.
No, just a quick question. I, I mean, it doesn't even really make a difference. I just wondered if, if the-
But there is, there is-
But does it go from agricultural to commercial?
Correspondence in here, I mean, the land trust's issue, the, any concerns that the land trust had were addressed in correspondence that I think is somewhere in here.
It's a moot point anyway, but I was just wondering if, if it changes. I, I do want to point out that when the, when you come out from that, from the property, which is directly across from Jeff, it's a, I don't know how many of you realize, it's right at the pinnacle of the hill. It's going to be troublesome as far as traffic when the trucks are in and out. I think that needs to be, somebody maybe need to have a policeman there or something because it could- because it could be problematic. It's problematic even in, when the big trucks come in and out for the hay and stuff.
I am, I mean, I am just thinking of, you know, other community solar arrays. I mean, it's, basically, you just need to get the panels on-site, and that's really the only traffic.
The only thing, okay.
And then everything else is on-site.
And I also want to know, if you do the mitigation, and I don't think it's going to help us really at all, not to see it. I think we won't be able to see the farthest north one, but we will see the one that's farther south. If you put the farther north one on that side of it, we wouldn't see it at all. But I think that's off the table. So what if it doesn't work out? Who's accountable? Who do we go to if, if it, everything dies, or the deer eat it, or who, who do we, do we go to then? Who's accountable?
Yeah, we would be.
You would be?
Yeah.
So, and as far as, I think the arbor, I think you're right, Gene, that they shouldn't put that up there. But there are four or five different kinds of trees, spruce trees, or, you know, evergreens that you could put up, and as long as they're not linear. But I just think it's unfortunate, the way this whole thing has sort of been handled and come about. I sort of feel like, like I said, a stone in the river that's being pushed down, and don't have much to say about it. So, but hopefully, it will support the community, and people will benefit from it. Any other question for me?
I, I really want this project to be successful, because if it's successful, and everybody is happy with the outcome, and the screening is as good as it could possibly be, or better...
The screening's a moot point for the second array. We'll see it the whole length. And to be told that we wouldn't is, I think Bima knows that's the truth. We'll see it.
I guess...
From my kitchen, from my deck.
I want you to make sure that, that it's as good as you can.
I know you will. At least, I hope you will. But, I mean, to say it's going to be not there is not true.
Well, I wasn't saying that. What I, I really want this to be successful, so we can do more of it. That's why I'm...
Not in this field, please.
No, no, no.
I don't want, two years from now, I don't want them saying they're putting it on the other, another 150 on the other side.
I mean, in other places, because if people can look at this and see, wow, it really wasn't as bad as everybody thought it was going to be, it will...
I hope you're right.
It will, it will be, you know, a motivating factor for more people to, to go down this road. No, I don't mean more on this, on this property.
But I think transparency would have been a better idea.
Always.
We're a small state, we're neighbors. I think if the initial thing had been said, this is what we're going to do, you can buy into it, it's going to happen this way, and just transparency, it would have been a lot better.
Yeah.
I mean, Jeff only heard, you know, May fourteenth this year, so, you know.
And I, I don't know how the PUCU probably do, Dan, but I know other, in other circumstances, abutting neighbors have gotten, gotten intervenor status. And I don't know how, what that process is, but even if we've approved it, and they've disapproved it, they're following, I think, the process as interveners on their own. Is that true, Dan?
The, the, being the proposed, even the process.
I don't even know what that term means.
Yeah, so the neighbors would have the right...
The neighbors would have the right to comment to the Public Utility Commission on the, on the project. So they'll be able to apply to them and say, we want to give our feedback on the record about this project, whether it would be something that they'd like to see changed, or whatever their objections are. So you have, that's the intervenor status, essentially.
So the process for the neighbors doesn't need to end here. You can follow it through all the way to the Public Utilities Commission, if you so choose.
Like I say, we're not opposed to...
I know.
But I have been opposed to the fact that there's been several miscreants, just things that have been said that, you know, weren't important, and haven't really, it's not really the way it is. But, you know, like I say, we hope that the project benefits the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes.
My name's Jerry Bird. I live here in Bennington. I've been working with Bima on community solar for the past four years. If you want to see an example of what we've done that would be almost identical to this, you can go to Shasberry, to Kurt Marrow's farm. There's no extra utility inputs there, except for the little station that Bima described. There's, we built a Phase One that was 100 kilowatts, then we built a Phase Two that was another 100 kilowatts, barely visible at all as you go down beautiful Buck Hill Road. The, the passion that we seem to have in this, this county for screening, to me, is absurd, when we walk right outside here and look down those power lines and see a scar cut right through the mountain. How did we let that happen and be so myopic about building, building a solar array that somebody might see partially the panels? And personally, what's, I've been working on specifically for these past year is putting this at the feet of our nonprofits, meaning PAVE, Sunrise Family Center, and Tutorial Center. All of these people are in line, are wanting to go onto this process. You can talk to Cindy Thompson at, at Sunrise Center. Before, when we were trying to set something up for them as a leaser with the wastewater treatment plant, she said no. But as we put the whole thing together for her as a possibility at Shadowbrook Farm, and/or on top of St. Peters, or the Unitarian Universalist Fellowship, the answer became yes. Why? Because she saw community solar as a way that if the Sunrise Center can grow, it can move with them. It doesn't have to stay at their locale. This is fundamentally important to what we have here in Vermont with Green Mountain Power, who is a cutting-edge utility that does not exist anywhere in the United States. So I would urge you, screening or not, solar panels, to me, are the most beautiful thing ever. And I'm, I know I'm a minority here in this state on that regard, but I also consider wind to be a preeminent necessity in the future, the near future. And if we don't get off our tails about putting this kind of thing in our community, and benefiting our, shall we say, more marginalized group, which we have a fair share of, I would wonder what we are doing, what we are thinking, if we're thinking about a couple trucks, or the fact that we didn't get notified, or that we didn't respond to the notifications, or that I haven't cared for the trees that are going to be, the dead trees that are on my property line, that are now going to be screened.
I don't think this is helpful to the conversation. Let's, let's kind of move this along.
I'll stop. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jerry. Yes.
My name is Tim Marr, and I'm the president of Southshire Community Solar, which is located on Buck Hill Road in Shasberry. And just speaking to, Bima was the developer, and just relevant, as far as relevant to this project, it really has benefited somewhere around 40 members, right, Bima? Mostly their households. And for myself, there wasn't any option of putting solar on the roof. It was, we have so many trees around here, and we have old buildings. So these community solars are a real benefit. There should be a lot more of them. I'm hoping in the future, Green Mountain Power tries to work toward 100% renewable energy, that they're going to be asking for more of this net metering from community solars, solar arrays. And it's been a real benefit, local jobs, people get their tax credits, I mean, they put back into the economy. It just is a great benefit. And also, importantly, when we had anything come along the way with issues, Bima was right there to deal with what we wanted to do. And he was usually ahead of the game. So he was, he's high integrity, local person, local jobs, and this is a big thing. So this is a person you can talk to along the way. I think the, the, a combination of evergreen trees is a pretty good screening. I mean, it may not be perfect, but it's, it's probably a big improvement. So I'm glad that you did that kind of work on it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Any other comments here? So, well, I think we need a motion, right? So we need a motion, we need a motion in favor of Shadowbrook Farm Community Solar Project screening. Is it specific to the screen? Yes. So being deemed a preferred site, is that, I think that's what the motion is, which would mean that we support the screening proposed, recommended by the Planning Commission.
Have at it. So moved.
Any discussion?
I'll second.
Yeah, thank you.
I don't know if this is appropriate or not, but I would like to, I'll vote in favor of the motion, as long as I can be assured that there will be language included, that the screening could be augmented in the future, if necessary. If, if you're approached by a neighbor who would like to see some improvements, or if things die, or things aren't growing as fast as they should be growing, or whatever the issue may be, I don't know if that's an appropriate addition to the motion.
Is that a PUC? Is that a...
I don't know.
You're going to want to be careful signing on to that, because you don't know what that could mean.
Well, I'm wondering if it's a Public Utilities Commission...
I don't know the answer to that.
Decision.
Just, like I said before, having seen what I've seen, I think it would be really beneficial.
Dan, do you have a suggestion here? I mean...
That's a tough, I mean, I think that you need to either approve the screening or not, if you want to, if you want to put a condition that the PUC, request the PUC to remain vibrant and healthy.
Okay.
That's one thing. But it's another thing to say that we don't know if it's adequate or not. So some indeterminate amount of additional screening should happen someday at somebody's discretion. That's kind of the tough.
It's just really hard to vote in favor of something when it's not a reality.
So could we add, could we add to that motion that we request that the PUC require the screening to be vibrant?
And maintained.
And maintained. Okay.
Dan, maybe you can answer a question I have. If we do nothing tonight, we don't accept, you know, or put forward our plan that says, hey, we want this preferred, you know, 515 plan that the DRB approved, and we say, hey, we like this as well, we could do nothing, and the PUC could still offer permits to, like, with no screening, correct?
They could, I don't know.
I mean, I don't know. I don't, I'm not asking for, like, likelihood, but...
I mean, the Public Utilities Commission is very likely to take to heart whatever the select board does. So, and you have three options, obviously. You can approve it, you can, you can say that you don't like, and you don't, you're not, you don't think it's an appropriate site, or a preferred site, or you can just simply say, you know what, we're not, we're going to take a pass, you guys figure it out. So there's really your three options as far as this tonight.
And the, and the, the upshot of those three options are, if we, if we don't approve it, then the likelihood of it getting preferred status, and those savings being passed on to the people who buy into the community solar, will be lost, although, yes, is that it?
That's likely.
That's likely.
That is correct.
So, so the reason to do the, I mean, the reason to come to the select board, as opposed to just have it leave the Planning Commission and go directly to the PUC, I think is so that the savings from the preferred status designation are passed on to the community.
That's a big reason. The other is that without this letter, the possibility that the PUC would rule against us, the probability that there would goes up a little bit, that the town is not in favor of the project.
Can we vote?
Yeah, I think we should vote. So... I think we have a motion on the floor at this point, so I think we're past that point.
It's just words that Trump, Bima, and so, in regards to...
Uh, I...
And it is, and it is...
I think we have to...
...topic.
I'm sorry. I think we ha, I think because we've already called the question, I think we have to vote at this point. So...
A moment, Gary.
I think just as a point of order, we can't. All right. So, so we have a motion on the floor in support of this solar project with the screening recommendations from the Planning Commission, and a request that the PUC require screening that is vibrant and sustained. Yes? All right. All in favor? A? I?
I.
Opposed?
Right.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeanne. Thank you, everybody, for your patience. In the, in the interest of time, we're going to keep moving right along with the agenda, rather than take a break at this point. It's, I apologize for any inconvenience in the presentation. I would like to request again, Stuart, if we, and Mike, if we could have a microphone at the front of the room, possibly for, whenever we, whenever, whenever possible, I'd love to have a microphone in the front of the room, and then a microphone for a presenter on the side, if possible. So, okay, okay. So, the next item on the agenda is a proposed grant for the Kosher Drive, or Coker Drive, depending on your pronunciation, pedestrian project. Dan, why don't you come up and set this up for us? But while you do, I'd just like to say, we've had a lot of conversations recently about dangerous intersections. And as far as I know, this is the number-one dangerous intersection in Bennington, the most likely place we are ever likely to see an accident, and certainly a dangerous pedestrian situation. So I'm, I'm thinking this may be a short item, and that we want to see this move forward, but let's hear what you've got to say.
I appreciate that. So unfortunately, this project goes back a long ways. I think the initial funding for this type, for this project, was a federal earmark, which we haven't, I don't think we've been able to get federal earmarks for over 10 years now. So, and we have received two other additional funding sources since that time. Quick update, or fast forward to where we are now, fully designed, fully permitted, even fully vetted from, from a funding, from a cost standpoint, because we did bid this project out and receive five bids, all of them significantly over what the available funding was. But we feel now, because we've been through this process, we know exactly where we are, we know exactly how much it's going to cost, assuming that we don't delay, because every year, obviously, costs go up. So our goal is to try to get this, get some of this additional funding and put this out to bid as soon as possible. It is a, it amounts to about a 14% match from the town, which is less than the typical 20%. It's essentially an additional about $50,000 than what the town has already committed. So it is significant, but it's not the whole boat that you're seeing here of the 14%. Mark Andrews with the Bennington County Research Commission, the transportation planner, he's been our manager of this project since, for how many years now? About four, five?
I have a lot of friends.
Yes. So he's very familiar with the project, and he could certainly answer any, any questions you have. But all we're really asking, well, what we are asking tonight is authorization to apply for this grant. And then, once we receive it, obviously, we'd have to accept it, so we could, we could move forward, if we receive it. And we're hopeful, because we think this is a very compelling project. Do you have any additional comments, Mark?
Only that I think it's a very important project. Right now, kids from the high school and junior high school, a lot of kids walk along the shoulder, and they have to cross five lanes of traffic, Cross Route Seven, and right now, there's no crosswalks. And the other, the other, one reason a lot of kids cross there is because there's no place to get from the, there's no way to walk from the east side of town to the west side of town, north of County Street, all the way to Houghton Lane. It's like this, over two... all the way to Houghton Lane. It's like this over-two-mile stretch where, because of the abandoned rail corridor and because of the highway, you just can't walk across. I think that's one reason why a lot of kids walk across the shoulder. And also, it would help access to Willow Park and make it much easier to get to Willow Park. And also, I think it will be, it's a very important link to the, to the trail network that we're building. But the big thing is safety. You know, right now, kids are just running across the, running across the highway, and it's, it's not a good situation. So, this will, this will solve that problem.
I think probably the, it's an incredibly bad situation, you know, certainly designed at a time when we didn't think of pedestrians, we only thought about cars. And it was designed a long time ago, and we need to fix it. So, I bet this board's gonna be supportive of that, but reassure us that there's no further cost savings. Have we squeezed every penny we can out of this? If there's any other sources of revenue, we would like to know that.
That's, that's a very good question, and we believe, based on the fact that we've actually bid this project out and failed to be able to build it due to the costs that came in, we believe that this is the worst-case scenario we have. We will be, we will be value engineering as much as we possibly can based on the five bidders. We'll reach out to all of them and say, hey, what, how could we make this project more affordable for you? And we can ask all five of them that question, and that will help us to do some minor redesigns to get this cost down. So, what you're seeing, we hope, Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, but you're seeing is this the worst case, we think this is the worst-case scenario without any, any value engineering whatsoever.
Can you remind the viewing audience of how much we're talking about here in total?
So, the total cost...
And what the project is?
Yes. So, the project is a bike-ped project from essentially East Road, where there's an existing bike-ped infrastructure, along Kosher Drive with a crossing along Route 7, very busy Route 7, and then it will connect to, it'll go to Aldi where it connects to a trail that's, that goes to Aldi and then up to Molly Stark. Eventually, we hope to connect that also to the rail trail, which is very near to completion, or to bidding as well. So, the total project cost is about 1.1, is that what it's, 1.1 million? So, about a 14% match of that, which is a combination of funds from, impact fee from Aldi, who actually put in about $60,000, a previous commitment from the town, and then it would be the new commitment of about $45,000 to $50,000, depending upon how, how much we can value-engineer the project.
So, the cost to the town of Bennington taxpayers is...
Well, the total cost to the Bennington taxpayers is 105, because, no, the $55,000 is an impact fee from Aldi.
So, of the 1.1 million, the total cost to the taxpayers is...
105, yeah.
$105,000.
That's correct.
And so...
So, it is a significant leveraging of funds, but understand that every dollar counts, and we try to keep it as low as possible.
Well, I think it's important to remind people, 1.1 million dollar cost, it's costing the taxpayers 100,000. Let's make it easy math. 100,000, 1.1 million, so you're saving, someone's paying a million dollars out there that's not us.
It's the federal, that'll be federal funds, yes.
It's important.
Well, and furthermore, isn't that the highest accident rate intersection, Mark, in Bennington? Don't I remember hearing you say that at a prior presentation?
There, that was a long time ago, and I'm not, I haven't seen the latest, but it is a very dangerous intersection.
It's a high accident.
It is a high...
It's a horrible setup right now. I mean, I'm asking these numbers because no one goes out and reads the stuff in advance, and maybe there's a few people in the viewing audience that do, but it's important to remind us what you're working on. I mean, you talked about it maybe eight months ago now, something, maybe even longer?
About a year ago.
It's a good reminder of what we're talking about. I mean, we've all seen kids, if you have never watched it, kids trying to get their bikes to their feet across Route 7 is frightening, and this is a great solution at a fraction of the cost.
So, when would this mean we get to begin?
The grant application is due in late June, and they'll probably announce the grants sometime in late summer. They haven't given an exact date, and as soon as we get the funds, we can go out to bid. So, we probably bid it late fall, early, early winter, for hopefully a spring construction.
And because all of our permitting is done, we don't have that.
Do you think it'll build faster than the Ninja Bike Path?
Excuse me?
I'm not throwing stones, I'm serious.
I didn't hear the question, so I'm sorry.
Do we think the production of this new section will be faster than the pace of construction on the Ninja Bike Path?
Well, I think it's probably gonna end up being the same, because we started this project with, the earmark wasn't very specific, but the second round of funding was probably about six years ago. And the Ninja path is probably about a five-year, five-year glide path.
Because it would be nice to, if the $100,000 from us, would be great if it didn't come first, if we have to pay $100,000 and then wait as long as we waited for the Ninja Bike Path?
Oh, no, you don't pay any of those, you don't, you don't pay those funds until they're expended. So, we get, the contractor does the first phase, let's say it's a $500,000 bill, then we only pay the 10%, for that. So, it's, it's as, as we spend it, not, we don't, we don't front-load it.
Yeah.
Dan, is there a north-south project in the works?
Okay, so, yes, and that's, that's our...
You don't, you don't have to go into it now.
Yep, but the north-south is, is not only, is the rail trail project as well as the Ninja project. So, we see this as the east-west backbone, and the rail trail is the north-south backbone.
Right along Route...
And they all, the nexus is right in that vicinity, yes. That's why this is a pretty important project.
Great.
And the sooner the better. Okay, is there a motion on the floor?
Can I ask a question?
You may.
What exactly is this all about? I don't understand.
You just proved a great point, Rose. That's why I asked the question in the beginning, just as a quick reminder of what we're talking about, and I thought we summarized it there, but maybe just one more time from the top.
Sure. Well, this is a new bike path that will go from, along Kosher Drive, along the north side of Kosher Drive, from East Road to the Aldi intersection.
And I don't think you're fair calling it just a bike path.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Shared-use path, right. It's some, I didn't wanna get too transportation plenary, but it's technically, it's called a shared-use path, which means walking, biking, rollerblading, you know, any non-motorized transportation.
And it's hopefully gonna be the reason why a child doesn't get hit trying to make it across four lanes of traffic.
Five.
Five. So, might even be six.
I think you said five, though.
There's a lot of lanes that they have to make it across.
Yeah, it's, right now, it's fi, it's five, and we'll be eliminating one more lane.
Unless you're sprinting, you're not gonna cross all the lanes at one time.
Well, and it's not just children. I mean, it's people going to work that are walking.
It's the baby carriages that worry me.
Worst-case scenario is that they...
Okay, so, we're gonna, so, a little more summary for Rose, just, just...
Sure.
What buildings does it connect, or what, what assets, what community assets does it?
And it connects the, there's, right now, there's an existing shared-use path on East Road, which goes to the, the regional middle school, and so, this path will connect with that. And then, it will also connect with the rail trail project, which is going to be built hopefully soon. And that rail trail project comes in right near the Aldi intersection. So, you'll be able to take the rail trail and then take a right on the, this new Kosher Drive path. Oh, and, of course, and, right, and also Willow Park. It goes, it passes Performance Drive, and I think the Town Highway Department's gonna be putting in a little improvement along Performance Drive, so you can get to, also get to Willow Park. So, it'll help with access to that.
Do you have the maps there with you?
I don't have any maps, I'm sorry.
All right. Rose, would you be willing to talk to him maybe afterwards and get a layout? We've, we've seen this project several times, but essentially, it's getting walkers and bikers off of a main road that's very dangerous, where the five lanes of the new Route 7 come down into Bennington.
I just don't understand how many of paths and all this stuff.
So, this is... I, I don't think there's much that we need worse than this, frankly. I've seen wheelchairs trying to cross there. I've seen people, kids of all, you know, kids, adults, everybody trying to cross there. There is no crosswalk, there is no safe pedestrian place, there is no crossing signal. There's nothing right now, except for the lights, and it seems extremely dangerous, and the sooner we can fix it, the better, frankly.
And we're trying to promote being a healthy community, which means you gotta get out and you gotta move, and you need to be able to do that in a safe way. So, yeah.
Did you get a motion?
I didn't get a motion.
So, moved?
Oh, you gotta build it out.
We need a motion.
So, so, motion, motion to approve the grant, application from Chad, any second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Get that money, get that thing done. The next piece of business for us is the manager's report. Stuart, what have you got for us tonight?
Well, I've got three action items for you. The first is a request from owners of the Moose Caboose, and you have a photograph of the vehicle in your packet. This vehicle is proposed to be placed in what they call the park area of Hampton Inn, which is the landscaped area in front of the Hampton Inn. It exceeds the maximum length of vehicles or carts for food service of 12 feet by almost, well, a little more than two times, two and a half times. The cart is 29 feet long, stem to stern. The ordinance prohibits vehicles of that length, except in the case of antique vehicles or special interest vehicles. And we do not define special interest vehicles, so these folks are before you seeking a waiver to be able to place this vehicle in that location. It does require you to waive the length limits of the ordinance.
So, if there's a, if there's language that it needs to be antique or special interest, would the town give us a, you know, Dan, could we ask you what, how to interpret that? Because if we have a regulation, we need, we would need to know why we would give a waiver to it before we choose to give a waiver. Is there any guidance you can give us on what, what antique or special interest would...
I think, you know, antique's probably self-explanatory, this is not antique, and we, as Stuart mentioned, there's no definition of special interest, but, you know, I guess, I would want, I would guess I would caution the board to be very careful about making this type of determination without a really good reason, because we don't have other folks here to comment on this that may think this is not appropriate. Be, I guess I would say, if you're gonna make this drastic of a change, I'd recommend that we look at the ordinance and see if it's appropriate to change the ordinance as opposed to doing these kind of one-time waiver things. But that's, it's within your discretion, and you guys have, have the ability to do that. As Stuart mentioned, this is two and a half times longer than what we allow anybody else to do, and we routinely tell people, you know, your, your equipment doesn't meet the requirements, so they buy a vehicle that does meet the requirements.
So, you do turn people away for over length?
Yeah, why is this coming in front of us? I guess that's...
Because it, because the ordinance does allow for a waiver, and these folks insisted upon bringing it before.
For antique or special interest?
That's the only, only way that you allow for a waiver, that's right.
So, so, the only thing we should be deciding tonight is, do we, do we see this as worthy of an antique or a special interest waiver?
Well, I, I'm wondering, I mean, it's cute. I'm wondering how this differs from something like the, the caboose that's in front of Bennington Station, which used to serve ice cream, and that's in a parking lot.
If these folks wanted to go through the permitting process and permit this as a building, they could do that.
And that's how that, that's, that's considered a building?
I don't recall how that one happened, I honestly don't, but I can tell you that if these folks wanted to permanently, or semi-permanently place this somewhere, they could go through the DRB process, everyone would have an opportunity to be heard, and they could determine whether or not it's appropriate use. I think they're trying, you know, using, using the vendor's ordinance as a little, for this type of almost permanent installation is perhaps not, in my opinion, an appropriate way to go. I can just hear some property owners screaming in my ears about it, but that's...
Can you, can you also speak to cart? Like, what's the difference between a cart and a building, then? Does cart sort of imply it's short-term?
You're really going deep on this one.
No, I'm just, I'm trying to understand.
So, carts are typically for sidewalk, or, or, you know, they're typically not the type of vehicles that you drive around as a, you know, as a chuck wagon or whatever.
And this would be set there, right?
Yes, yeah.
So, with this...
Semi-permanently.
That I knew that had a cart in town, he had to get it off the street every night.
So, is this essentially a...
So, that is one other, that is one other issue that they're gonna face, Jim, is, is they would technically need to remove it every night, and I'm not so sure that they focused on that themselves.
I'm sorry, what was that? They would have to?
The vendor's ordinance requires that you remove your vending equipment every evening, so I'm not really sure that they've, they're focused on the fact that this would have to be removed every evening.
It didn't sound like it.
No, so...
Well, that was in, with, with respect to carts, that was only within the downtown. This is on private property.
Regardless of the private property, now, you're not allowed to just cart it there indefinitely.
Okay, so as a cart, they need to be able to move it. As a, if they got a building permit, they could...
Leave it.
Leave it there on private property for the summer.
And there's no locations in town that would allow this. It's, it's anywhere.
It's a blanket...
Ordinance.
Blanket ordinance, quite...
Okay. So, it seems to me like the bigger issue is that it really is functioning as a building, not as a cart. So, why would we, why would we be entertaining this under the food cart?
Well, if they don't move it every night, then, yeah, it, it's a cart if they move it. If it's not, then it's a building.
I'm thinking...
Well, there's, that may be imponderable at this point, but, but it does feel like we have an ordinance in place, and we are being, and there is room within that ordinance to do a waiver for a couple of specific things, which are not as specific as we would like. So, it is possible that we could ask the, maybe we should ask the Planning Commission for, you know, greater clarity on this ordinance at some point, but in the absence of that ordinance, I think the question for us tonight is, do we feel that this is, is something that we would start down the road of doing variances for something like this?
Motion to deny the request for a variance.
Okay, there has been a motion to deny the request for a variance.
I'll second that.
The motion has been seconded. Is there, is there discussion on the motion? Jim, you're being awfully quiet. You got any, any other ideas on this?
No, he, we, he's gonna talk.
All right.
You know, I have a certain amount of sympathy for the underdog in this. Nevertheless, I had to fight for my little plot of land.
Temporary plot of land?
Owned by the town.
That I paid for. And it's not in the main downtown, so there's a certain amount of sympathy that I have with respect to that and know that the work involved, and that's immaterial. But, I don't know, give them a temporary license. Give them six months.
Well, we do have a motion on the floor. I guess...
Was there a comment during this time?
Yes.
It seems as though Dan described about four other, three or so other options that they could go down as far as...
Permitting.
Permitting. It doesn't appear, mind you, I've not seen it other than the picture, that they will be hooking this up and relocating it every single night. So, Dan, it's, did you describe all the other options that were available? I mean, I'm sure you did, or they should, you don't have to homework everybody, but...
Yeah, the main option would be for them to simply permit it as a building and get approval for that under that.
So, it's not as though you said, "Good luck." You gave them options.
Okay. Other comments?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not comfortable approving a change right now. I think we would need to take a much deeper dive.
Okay.
What if you agreed to have them move it every, every night?
We still have an ordinance that it is inconsistent with.
Well, the ordinance with any other food cart says that it has to be removed.
Right, but they're long. It's much longer than, than...
There's an oversized issue, yeah. All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say we've run the discussion. All in favor of the motion, which I will restate as a motion to decline this request, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Dan, I think it's important for, for this board, I'm gonna speak for this board, to say two things. One is, the request was submitted in a very respectful and courteous way, and I would like it, I would like those people to know that I really appreciate it, and I expect the rest of the board really appreciated their approach to us. And second of all, we, we would like to encourage that, businesses, good businesses in Bennington, and I would be interested in their food, but because we're, but, but perhaps we could encourage them to use some of the routes that we have in place for getting that replaced. Okay, thank you. Stuart, your next action item?
We have to determine the procedure for filling the boards and commission positions. As I indicated in the memorandum to you, and you received the packet at your last meeting, all of the incumbents seek to be reappointed to the various boards and commissions. The only new commission, which is the Energy Committee, only has, I think, at the present time, three individuals who are interested in serving, one who lives in Shaftesbury, and one of your select board members has also applied.
Thanks, Jim.
I'm, I'm asking the board, do you wish to interview all of the incumbents once again? Or do you really wish to put them on the agenda at the future meeting for appointment, and then determine when we have sufficient applicants, your interview process for the Energy Committee?
Yes.
Well, I, it...
So Jim's saying yes to interviewing all the applicants, right?
No.
No, what are you saying yes to?
Just the new ones.
Okay.
It doesn't sound like you're going to get an overwhelming amount of response.
To the Energy Committee? That, that remains to be seen.
I think we need some outreach on the Energy Committee, but we, we, I do not have an interest in, in starting up that committee if we have, if we have weak interest in people that are, that want to submit their names.
Right.
So unless we see a sort of robust uptick in applicants for the Energy Committee, I say we just keep that on the table for now.
I, I think that's appropriate. And, and of course, I would recommend that we, we not spend time interviewing incumbents who have already served and served well, if they are interested in being reappointed.
I agree with Jim on that point. Jean, did you?
Mm-hmm, yeah, that's fine.
So, do you have what you need on that?
I got it.
Can I ask, so I had someone approach me about the town service officer, and I know that we have one applicant already. My understanding is that position is, is sort of like the constable position, in that we don't actually have a role for that person? Because it's been taken over by Department of Health?
As I, I think I sent that out to you. Several years ago, the legislature actually revoked the powers of the town service officer.
Revoked, okay.
They, they, and in fact, turned them over to the Agency of Human Services. So there are people in the Agency of Human Services who now have the authority to issue the right to stay a night, the right to get a meal for those people who are indigent, or people traveling through the community who find themselves in a difficult time. There is a place they can go, our police are aware of that. So there is really no, no responsibilities that lie once now, once again, with the, the town service officer. And we have not appointed anyone to that position in years. It is a statutory position, but as the, the information from the league indicated, the select board would have to set pay, set responsibilities, develop the position into what the select board determines, in order to give it credence. Otherwise, it is a position without any responsibility, without any duties.
So is there a way, so if you're saying we need to keep it on the books, is there a way that we can say this is not a position that...
Inactive.
It's an inactive position.
It's an inactive position.
You could do that.
Okay.
Statutory, it exists, but we don't appoint a constable, that's a statutory position. The constable's actually a position that is created by the charter. We don't fill that position, because we have a full-time police department, there's no reason to do that.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Stuart, before you do your third action item, let me, another mistake I made tonight. After, we reconvened after the solar. Bill Scully had to leave, he had to leave at seven o'clock. It's obvious he's not here, but he asked me to make his apologies, I failed to do that. But he, he absolutely had to leave because of a Tuesday night commitment, and he was sorry about that. So apologies for the delayed apology.
So we're not going to move, we're not going to move forward with the Energy Committee right now?
We're not going to move forward on that.
Is someone going to notify the people who...
I will.
Thank you.
I'll let them know that, that it's on hold.
And can we...
Until such time as we get a pool of applicants.
Yeah, and can we let the applicant from Shaftesbury know that they're very welcome to come to the meeting, but we can't appoint them to the committee?
Glad to do so.
Okay.
The, the third action item is to set a work session or sessions for the water sewer fund budgets, which went out to you last week. And for those of you who would like a hard copy, I brought several. Some of you responded to my email and said we didn't, you didn't need a hard copy. So before you leave tonight, if you want one, I've got them here. But we do need to set a, a time. Last year, we met only once, on a Saturday morning, and went through both water and sewer funds. We agreed, and normally what we do is, we agree on the funding scenarios, and that at a future meeting of the select board, there is a motion to adopt the funds, and then ultimately, we set the rates come July. So we would not be looking to adopt the funds on that particular work session, but at least get them to an appro, point of approval where the board is comfortable with what is being presented to the public.
Saturday in June is going to be difficult, Stuart. What have you got for us? What, what's your...
Well, I provided a calendar for you. We actually have five Saturdays available to us. I just, you folks need to, to come to consensus on one of those days, or you could attempt to meet on a, on the third, which is a Monday, or the 17th, which is a Monday, which would be your normal meeting night. You could meet in the evening, and try to do those fund budgets at that time as well.
I would rather meet on a Monday night.
Me too.
How's everybody else doing? Saturday, Saturday in June is...
I only have one Saturday in June.
Yeah, there's, there're just not many of them. Are you able to do that, Stuart?
I serve at your pleasure. It's a full moon on the 17th, so perhaps we ought to meet on the third.
Yeah, I was going to say, let's keep it the 17th.
Well, it means we don't have the planning commission, right? Because they, they meet on Mondays, but... Okay, all right.
June 3rd.
And we can meet here as well.
Or Monday, June 3rd?
Monday, June 3rd, is that good? We'll meet at 6:00 P.M.?
Monday, June 3rd is fine with me. Jim? Carson?
Shall we plan to meet in this room?
The 3rd? This is the same...
Shall we plan to meet in this room, as we did last, last year?
Can we do, can we look at...
Can you be more specific?
Sorry.
Use your words.
The 3rd is bad. Is the 17th too late?
17th is not too late for, for the town.
All right, everybody check the 17th, please. Chad, yeah?
Yep.
And Jim?
17?
Okay.
So, both, is what we're saying?
We're, no, we are saying, on the 17th, we will do the water and sewer budget.
What's the earliest time we could meet?
5:30 for me.
5:30?
But...
5:30 is fine.
I can do 5:30.
Pizza?
Thanks, Stuart.
Steak.
Hey, it's Half Price Pizza Monday!
Steak.
We would know that.
Surf and turf.
So we'll meet on the 17th, we're going to meet here. And we'll, that way, we have the department heads lined up in front of you, and that way, with the cat TV, if they're available, can cover it, and people can join us in the audience, instead of trying to crowd into the conference room.
I think that's good.
Okay.
I would like a copy, that hard copy of that, if that's extra, please. Thank you.
Did we say 5:30?
What's that?
5:30?
5:30.
5:30. Thank you, sir. So the... That's it for you, Stuart. You've got some informational things for us.
Just a very brief, we are, we've notified the attorneys for Scarafonies that we are moving to a purchase. We haven't set a date yet, but we will be buying the land. I am still in conversation with a potential vendor, who would also perhaps be a potential investor. I don't have any of those figures at this time. And that's, that's really it. There's nothing, nothing different on the PFOA, we're moving forward. Bids are out. I noticed in, in the paper today that there was one of the projects bid, contract five. So we're moving forward.
On that note, can you politely, or ask whoever's bidding on the spring, the additional fee, that would be kind of if we were able to put a, a public kind of tap-in of some sort? I know that it's very popular, the one up in Woodford, and it seems as though that it would be the cheapest time to do it, would be right during the initial phase construction.
Yeah, I think we could, that's, that would be simply an engineering situation. We'd have to, we'd have to work that into it, but that, that's possible.
Okay, thank you.
And can we just have Stuart update us on the status of the charter? For the public?
The charter.
The charter.
The charter was adopted last week. It's on its way to the governor's desk. I imagine it will take effect at July 1. As I indicated in a lengthy memorandum to you, I took the time to go through the House version that was approved. They did strike a number of changes that we had proposed, that the voters had approved, most of them having to do with the way we do business, as opposed to the business itself. And we made some changes in the recall provision that were struck. The idea that the board could remove a member after four consecutive absences was struck. Some changes in the manager language would have to do with the term of office and the annual evaluation. I think the feeling there of the committee was that those are things that you could put in place, without making them part of your constitution. And then there, there were a couple of other changes in the downtown improvement district that were not adopted. So the downtown improvement district remains unchanged. The map must be changed by a vote of the public, not by a vote of the board. And we do not include multifamily residential properties in that downtown improvement taxing district. And then the, the big change, the most beneficial change, I think, is the local option tax. That did pass. So that went through both House Ways and Means, and Senate Ways and Means. So when the board feels it's appropriate to put before the voters, we will have that opportunity to pass any one of four local option taxes. The local option tax, that is the sales tax, could generate close to $700,000 to $900,000 on an annual basis. Thirty, 30% of which goes to the state, and comes back to towns with state properties in the form of pilot payments, payment in lieu of taxes. The remainder, 70%, stays with the town. So I, I think, given the massive rewrite that it was, the, the, the changes that were not adopted may be things that we thought were really important, but they were things that the, at least the House Government Operations Committee had real concerns with. They were, they were looking at things like the select board being able to expand the taxing district as a bad thing. They didn't hear from Jonah, who really wants to be a part of the district and would love to see it changed. So now we've got to put that before the voters, should we decide to do that. They thought that removing a member who was elected by the people due to four consecutive absences could be abused by a select board that went rogue, and just didn't want somebody on the board. So that went, that was going to go down early on, I could tell from my conversations with the government.
You could tell by the overwhelming amount of people who put their name under the hat in the last election, that...
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a rogue board.
Really, yeah.
So I, I, you know, I, I think we still got a good document. It's an upgraded document. I think it's, I think the work of the Charter Review Committee should still be applauded. And what we agreed to is that the next time we go, which will not be a massive rewrite, we probably won't do that for another 50 years, is we need to put each section on the ballot. That's what the difference was. The interpretation of the law, which was written in part by people on the Government Operations Committee with Legislative Council, differed from the interpretations of our council and the Secretary of State's office.
So, may I ask, I had heard that perhaps the changes that, that didn't go through, we could resubmit those next year? Are you suggesting, are you suggesting otherwise?
I, I would, I would suggest that the board take a look at those that they think really important. I can tell you that both Senator Sears and Senator Campion are indicating that they will take those, as already approved by the voters, and take them to the Senate. I'm not sure the Government Operations Committee, House Government Operations, would agree that that's appropriate.
Okay.
So I, I don't know whether it's worth getting into another protracted debate between the House and the Senate on those things, or whether we pick the ones that are important and push those forward.
Go back and do them one by one.
So, and it sounds like then that's something to go on the, it, once, once the dust settles, then go back on the agenda.
And didn't you say a couple of those items could be incorporated in our policies and procedures?
Yes.
Yeah, so there's another avenue.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so Stuart, just not to prolong this meeting, which is already going long, but I, it is, we did receive the quarterly statement. I had a very brief question for you. Just reassure us. Looks like the general fund and the highway department are pretty close to 91% and 95% spent out, but we're not worried about that?
Uh, we're not particularly worried about the general fund. Melissa, Melissa Courier, our finance director, has been worried about the highway fund for most of the last quarter. We've been working very, very closely with RJ, making sure that where we overspent, and much of that was in the paving projects that we did. When we had that opportunity to pave those roads that were torn up for the PFOA projects, we moved on that. We did receive compensation from the contractors for their, for the amount of work they would have been required to do. We certainly got a better road project out of those than just paving half the road, and leaving the other half as it was. So that's, that's the primary issue. I, we're going to be close on the highway fund. But I think we have sufficient cushion in the general fund, that the general activities fund, which is what the auditors look at, which is the combination of general, highway, and fire, will be okay.
You'll be, well, okay, all right. Well, keep us posted on that, if you think that's going in the wrong direction. Okay, upcoming agenda, let's see, where have we got that? So in June, we try to get water sewer budgets adopted. We've set a time for that. We try to do the town DID tax rate set, and we get the manager to set employee salary increases for the coming year.
That's correct.
All on your calendar for June. In addition to that, the vice chair and I have come up with, have a, have a rolling list that we keep going now. So what we have is for June 6th, we've got the UCS plan and Goldstone Phase 2 for the rec center. We've got the cultural plan and arts council presentation by Shannon Barsadi. We, we are setting water and sewer tax rates, setting DID tax rates, and we're getting a Morgan Spring update.
That's right, that's all for the 10th of June.
That's for the 10th of June?
Yeah.
Yeah. That's a lot, but I think that's, that's what we have to do at that point.
We won't be ready for water and sewer rates, because we won't have, we wouldn't have met until...
Right, okay, so water and sewer rates go to the 24th. On the 24th, we're looking at Building Brighter Futures, the initiative for youth, and we are looking at the rescue squad presentation at this point.
That's correct.
And then, the vice chair and I have been talking to several of you about some umbrella topics we'd like to cover during the course of the year, those being childhood adversity, economic development, recreation in the YMCA, housing, youth services, senior services, and health services. And, and we'll bring you more, and the opioid, opioid effort. And those are umbrella topics that we hope to cover roughly on a monthly basis as we, as we go through the year, as able. Obviously, giving preference to the immediate things that the, that the select board has to deal with on a regular basis. So... That brings us to other business, and Tom always used to start with Jean. Why don't we start with Chad, just to kind of give Jean a little breather?
No other business, just an announcement that high school graduation's coming up, June 7th. It's early this year, 6:00 P.M. It's always great to have, have people come out and see it. Tomorrow night is the underclassmen awards at 6:00 P.M., and then the following Wednesday is the senior awards. A lot of great students being represented. They always like to see people there. Long, fun evening, but come out and see them. But the graduation is on the 7th at 6:00 P.M.
Great. I just want to say, the Third Annual Southern Vermont Economic Summit was held last Thursday. We were well represented there. It's a, it was an economic summit, bringing together both Wyndham and Bennington Counties. And...
bringing together both Wyndham and Bennington Counties, and several projects in Bennington County were seen as vital projects in terms of moving us forward. And it was actually a really great day to talk about revitalization of communities downtown and financing structures. So there were, you know, there was a lot of energy, and I think there's a lot of good work that's being done. So I was happy to be there.
Great. Yeah, great job on Mayfest, wonderful stuff there, and it certainly was wonderful to see downtown humming on such a beautiful weekend. And I'd like to take a minute just to thank all of our legislators, including you, Jim, for pushing through the charter change. We didn't get everything we wanted, but it got through.
It was hard, too, I'll tell you. It was pretty.
And I know it was a real white knuckler, nail biter, whatever you want to call it, but I am glad that the will of the people wasn't completely defeated by Montpelier. So thank you very much for your efforts, but also thank you to our senators and our other House representatives that helped push that through.
Just a question for Stu about the General Stark Letter that we purchased about a year ago. When do you think we'll put that up?
Well, as you know, when you asked me that question before the meeting started, it is, it is, it totally slipped my mind. We have the plaque, we have the pole. I think we just need to remind our crews as to where it will go, and I think we had picked a location back when this was moving, and we'll get it up.
Do you need a spot to mount it?
It comes, it'd be mounted to a pole and be placed on the sidewalk.
Okay.
I can't say.
Time frame?
I have to, I have to, it'll be, it'll be up, how about it'll be up before Battle Day.
That is an unsatisfactory answer.
I figured as much, but I can't be more specific than that.
I had two things. Dan, when you were up before, I wanted to make sure that, I'm a massive fan of the biking and recreational trails going in and around Bennington, and I didn't want my comment about the Ninja Bike Path and the length of time it's taken to build to be something that was directed towards the town or town officials. I understand that it is not. But that's important, because what's happening on those, I utilize them a lot. I know they've improved. I know it's something you want to see through, and I just don't want you to think that I'm not supportive of that project. In other news, I actually, I'm announcing tonight that as of July 1st, I will be ending my term on the select board a little bit early due to a change in residency and a change in jobs. So that's a little bit of a, kind of, an announcement tonight. All good news, but as of July 1st, I will be no longer sitting up here. And I know that this board and the town officials are already working on a great plan for the transition with me going off on July 1st, and what's to come. It hasn't been determined yet, but there are a variety of options that they will seek out. So most importantly, thank you for giving me the opportunity to sit on this board, to work with this great group of people, and for those that are no longer sitting up here, Tom Jacobs. But it's been great, and I am very thankful for that, and my apology for having to step off early. If anybody would like to learn more about it, you can reach out to me, but I'm guessing it's not that exciting for you, so I probably won't be hearing from you. But again, thank you very much for giving me the chance to serve the town.
Carson, we're really going to miss you, and just on behalf of the board, I'd like to thank you very much for your service. But also, we have you for a couple of more meetings.
Yeah, that's important.
I'd like this board to know that we will take up an open session how we want to proceed, given, at one of our next upcoming meetings, before he leaves, we will come up with a plan for whether we find a replacement or go through the year without that seat filled. And so we'll talk about that at a future meeting, but thank you very much for your time.
An apology for having to step off early. I guess that's important to say, but.
Yeah.
I just wanted to mention one other event that's happening at the high school that's called Proud. It's this Friday evening, that's the 31st, right? Yes, 31st, at 6:00. And I went to one other a few years ago. It's basically a community, huh? 7:00, sorry. It's a community event. You kind of bring a blanket or outdoor chairs, and you sit on the field, and they're singing, and it was just the most uplifting couple hours that I'd spent in a while. So anyway, if it's a nice night and you're looking for something to do, head over to the football field at MAU.
Is there a theme, Jean?
It's called Proud, and it's just, I remember a lot of singing.
Kindergarten through 12th grade, so it involves all the elementaries and the middle school and high school, so.
Yeah, it's just a really good, feel-good, happy-you-live-you kind of event.
What's the date?
This Friday.
The 31st, Friday, this Friday night. And then I had a very funny email from a resident in North Bennington. He's very concerned about the chickens crossing the road. I think it's on, what's the road that goes from Route 7A to, maybe like Orbed Road? There's chickens and ducks and guinea hens often in the road. Are there ordinances?
Why are they crossing?
Why? That's why I said, if only the chickens wouldn't cross the road, this wouldn't be a problem.
For some follow reason.
So I did know if there were ordinances. I didn't know how to answer the question.
Can you put a crosswalk out?
Maybe a bridge, I don't know.
We really don't try to pass ordinances against.
So it's just.
Garden, barn animals.
He thinks it's very dangerous, and I have, I have almost, you know, hit a foul once or twice myself. So that's the risk you have to take, I guess, so.
Yes.
Okay, I'll tell him.
It's the risk the chickens take as well.
Yeah, okay. I'll follow up with that person.
Wouldn't have to go to the grocery store if you wanted chicken.
Nice to end things on a light note.
Well, we got through that without anybody making a "how did the chicken cross the road?" joke, so.
I did.
Why don't I ask for a, do we need an executive session tonight?
We need, two real estate items. We should be able to move through them quickly.
May I ask for a motion to go into executive session on a real estate matter, please?
If we have to.
So moved.
Second, all in favor? Aye. Okay. We are going into executive session.